Yep. Okay. Let me go back to the beginning, sorry. All right, so just to make things easier, if everyone can put themselves on mute, and I was also thinking that it might be easy to use the chat function, although I'm not sure how well that will work in screen sharing. So Sarah, do you want to give it a try? Just open up a chat. If you go to the bottom, you can wiggle it around, or at the top, depending. You might have to hit more. There's a chat function. And I believe that between Richard and Anthony, we will get some chats going. Or questions answered. If you have any questions, we'll do it that way. I know that I'm usually the worst offender in terms of voice quality, but this should help out a little bit. So thank you very much, everyone, for showing up for City Finance 101, an introductory guide. I'm sure that, you know, everyone rolled out of bed excited for this. So what are we going to? Let's see, can I go to? Okay, the presentation goals. There we go, I knew there was an extra page. I'm gonna need to stop looking at the chat. Okay, so the goal of the presentation is to talk to new council members and prospective council members a little bit of the basics about Montgomery's financial situation. Also, city finance can look a little bit daunting. There are a lot of numbers, a lot of categories. The numbers look large and they're small, which makes them even more difficult to look at. And to try and provide a little bit of a picture of where we stand right now. If y'all have been following along for the prospective members, and obviously Kevin and Randy, you're aware that things have been changing dramatically recently. And what does that mean? Where are we right now? And actually, I might not be able to tell you that, because that is kind of an interesting situation. Rules. So the city finances, you know, you don't have to get too worried about what you have to learn, because if you understand your own personal finances, the city finances are not significantly different from your personal finances. But there are some different rules. There are things called enterprise finances. And the funds must be kept separate from what we call the general fund. So for us, the main enterprise fund is the water and sewer fund. So when you get your water bill and you look at it and you wonder why we change rates, which we haven't done for a couple of years now, it's because the water and sewer fund is an enterprise fund, and it is expected to operate as a viable, we'll call it a business for lack of a separate term, but we don't make profits like a for-profit business. We make money so that we can support the water and sewer operations on an ongoing basis. The second rule is that we are required to operate a balanced budget. Mostly on a practical perspective, because cities going bankrupt, obviously, are occasionally in the news, and it's never a good thing for its citizens. And providing services to citizens is the whole point of your local government. Another rule is regarding what tax rates we can levy on our citizens. And the state legislature has changed the rules over the past few years to restrict what increases in rates and, in fact, what the actual increases can be that we can levy without going to a vote of our citizens, which is complicated, which means that we do try and avoid that, as well as just the practical perspective that, from our viewpoint, we have tried to look at it that we need to provide value to our citizens for what we tax them for. No funny business. Sometimes if you're planning on a divorce, you could hide the money from your husband. If you're saving something for a surprise, you know, you can pretend that you never got your tax refund. Nah-uh. There's none of that funny business here. We have audits from independent auditors. Our financials are presented to the public. And we also have a debt rating from a debt ratings company. And that's an integral part of how we finance our future growth. And the funny business is not allowed, under any circumstances. Another rule is that our tax revenue is already pre-allocated. We collect 2% of sales tax. Half of a percent of that is legally allocated to the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation. Half a percent of that is dedicated to property tax reduction. And only 1% of that goes unrestricted into the general fund. And then we also have something called 380 agreements that further promise some of our tax revenue back to developers. The other thing is that our obligations are long-term and binding. When we enter into a debt obligation, we're pretty much 100% required to repay it, no matter what. Municipalities going bankrupt are not the same as a homeowner defaulting on their house. It's more like student loans, where you own that for life. Regardless of what happens, the government will still get their money back. Municipalities do go bankrupt, and the consequences of that follow them for years and years and years. There are very few that have, and we don't want to be one of them. So when you enter into a debt obligation or borrowing obligation, the considerations are very serious. And it's not just a matter of looking at your current revenue. It's a very, I wouldn't say tedious process, but it's a very considered process. All right, the types of financials. I'll briefly go through this, and then you should refer back to this page when we get to the end and start looking at the actual financials. For the first, you have the account balances report. Think of this as your various checking accounts that you get, or your bank statements that you might get from, you know, First Wood Forest or First Conroe Bank. Basically, we have different accounts and different bank statements, and includes all of our funds, and does not specifically identify where you can spend this money. So again, we went back to some money is not available for general use. The account balances report is just all of the money that belongs to the city of Montgomery. Number two, the profit and loss budget performance. This is where most of the action takes place. This is the biggest chunk of money that is allocated on an annual basis, somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million, $3 to $4 million. Each fund has its own section in this profit and loss budget performance report. The general ledger, we generally, is usually not printed out, but you can ask for this. It's more like your check register. It's basically what's happening in all of the funds. And then the cash flow report is very similar to number three, but it also shows money going in and out of tech pool, which is like a money market account, but for government funds. But again, this part is not important at this point, but we'll get back to it. All right, types of funds. The general fund, as I said, is the most important. It's the largest financial entity. It pays most of our employees. It's also the most difficult to properly project, because it has so many different line items. It has so many different parts. At the end of the year, we will most certainly do a budget amendment regarding this item. And we do that every year, not including years in which we have pandemics, or not just years. And the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation is not technically a fund. It's technically a separate legal entity that was established by an election. Its mission is to promote economic growth. It has a separate board of seven people, two of which are on the governing body. So sometimes it can include the mayor. Right now, it includes two city council people. It has very few budget pressures, because it does not have employees. So that makes things a lot easier. It has historically not spent its entire budget, and it has been accumulating assets. The water and sewer fund is the enterprise fund that we spoke about earlier. It's supposed to be a standalone financial entity. It's also interesting in that it is weather-dependent, behavior-dependent, and can see large, unexpected expenses. It's sort of like having a boat and two horses, except for you need it. You can't sell it off. This is one of the two most important services that the city provides. Okay, the debt service fund. So when we collect property taxes, approximately half of our property tax goes directly to the debt service fund. And all of our debt is paid through here. It largely operates without any input from city council, except through the tax setting process. The bookkeeper, Anthony Lasky, is the most important person in relationship to this fund. It's much more of a precise process, transferring money to our banks to make sure that the debt is paid at the proper time. The capital project fund is enormous, but rarely talked about. City council approves projects. And then they are usually funded, or I guess sometimes they're funded and then the city council approves the specific projects. They're usually funded through debt or grants. And there's usually a long timeline through the approval, the engineering process, the construction process, and then completion. There's a lot of moving parts in this. And again, Anthony is an integral part of making sure that what's going on in this account complies with state legal requirements, the grant legal requirements, the accounting requirements. It's very tedious, and largely happens out of sight of city council. Although, as council, and as a citizen, you're obviously able to ask any questions, either through email or through the Texas Open Meeting Act request, which goes through Susan. Hot funds. I had an extra space, so I thought I'd put that in there. We have a very small hotel motel fund balance. The hotel motel tax is like the unicorn for the city. And we are hoping to someday have a large enough hotel that we generate hotel motel tax. It's a lot of money, and it accumulates rapidly. And you can use it for bringing more people to the city. It would be great. But it does have a lot of restrictions on how you can use it. So it'd be great to have, but when we start getting it, we'll have to start using it properly. So that's something that will generate a lot of discussion in the future, when we get a hotel. Departments. So not much needs to be said about this. We have the court department. You probably will know the least about this department and how it runs, so spend some time talking to Kimberly about it if you have any questions. She probably answers the least amount of questions when she does the departmental report. The police department has the largest staff within the city and answers a lot of questions. Public Works has the second-largest staff, and they are the most visible face of the city. And part of the people who work in Public Works may actually be paid out of the utility fund. I'm honestly not sure which guys were paid out of which fund, but it doesn't matter. There's definitely overlap between what the guys do and, you know, all the guys that work for Public Works or the utility fund know how to do the items that are allocated between either entity. And administration, Susan, Richard, Anthony, and Dave. So basically, that's the everything else department. In some ways, it sounds large. It is large, complicated, and without this side of things, the city would not work. The city secretary does not answer people's phones and make copies. Sorry, Susan. Susan is in charge of making sure the elections run smoothly. She's also the HR department. She's half of the legal department. And there are a lot of things that fit into this department. You notice that nobody on here was involved with raising revenue, except for the court department. So basically, when you look at the sheets that we break out later, all of these are cost centers. Our revenue is generally completely unrelated to the provision of services, but not completely. So revenues are split up into two sections. One is property taxes, or taxes and one fees for service. On property taxes. So here's where you take note. Our tax rate is .4 per thousand assessed value. Our assessed value is set by the appraisal district, the Montgomery County Appraisal District. Did everyone get their assessed value? And maybe you protested it, or perhaps you didn't. City residents pay into four assessment districts. Or five, rather, sorry. You pay .1 to Emergency Services District Number Two, which is your fire department. You pay .4475 to Montgomery County. You pay .0589 to the hospital district. And you pay a whopping 1.3075 to MISD. And that's for a total of 2.3139. So you pay .4 to us and almost 2% more to everyone else. So when constituents complain about property taxes, for the most part, that has nothing to do with us. A, we don't set the assessed value. There's nothing we can do about that. And B, the predominant value of the, or the predominant assessor in our area is the ISD. And then the county, and then us. Two years ago, sorry?
Question in the chat?
Okay.
Just letting you know, from Julie.
I can't see it.
Is there a comparative to a city credit score?
I can't.
So I'm reading it to you. Is this debt rating compared to the city credit score?
Yes.
Just to clarify, 2% of the taxes is what the city functions off of budget-wise? Yes?
Mostly. About three-quarters of our taxes come from sales tax, and about one-quarter comes from property tax.
Correct.
Roughly.
And then, does it need to MEDC specifically? No.
Sorry?
The hot fund designated to MEDC specifically? No, they go into our general fund?
No, neither. They have to stay separate.
Where do they go, then? Because I've seen them on a lot of them.
They stay separate. It stays in its own balance sheet. Some cities designate a convention, or create a convention and visitors bureau to spend the hotel motel tax. But the money must be spent for specific types of operations or activities. And some cities find it easier to do that with a separate entity altogether. Some cities do it within their city operations. So you must keep it within its own fund in order to not mix it up. But then you could spend it from whichever entity you wanted.
Okay, and that was your last question.
Okay. All right, so back to taxes, property tax. So when the assessed value is set, there is also an exemption. The assessed value is set, but then you have exemptions to lower the appraised value. We have disabled veterans exemptions. We have over-65 exemptions. We have homestead exemptions and agricultural exemptions. I think that those are the main ones in the city. And I'm not sure if there are any timber ones in the city, but I guess that's another possibility. And then sales tax. So 6.25% of everything you buy that's taxable goes to the state. Then up to 2% can be claimed by local government. We currently have 2% of the maximum. So we currently have the maximum 2% within the city limit. In areas outside of the city limit that we annex into the city later, we might have less. That's kind of a new thing, and we'll deal with that in the future. It's too complicated for here. Fees for service. So permits, when you want to build a deck on the back of your house, when somebody wants to build a new house altogether, that sort of thing, you have to get a permit from the city. That would count as a fee for service. Fines, like traffic fines, are not really fee for service, but I also stuck that in there. That's another way that the city raises revenue. But traffic fines are not the panacea. Good portion of the traffic fines, in fact, go back to the state. And it is also illegal for the city to use traffic fines as a budget item. I mean, it obviously fits into the budget, but we cannot use fines to specifically inflate our budget. All right, expenses. Personnel is a big portion of our expenses. We have approximately 20 full-time people. Over half of those are with the police department. Contract services are a way for smaller cities like us to get quality care, we'll call it, without sacrificing by paying for the, we don't necessarily need full-time services in some areas. Since the city has been growing, we have been reconsidering that option. One example would be bookkeeping. We previously contracted that out. And now we decided that we were paying more for the contracting than it would cost for us to have somebody full-time. So that's why now we have Anthony Lasky working for us. And I think that that's a fantastic way of reevaluating the benefits of contracting, because I think we're going to get way more with having a full-time bookkeeper than we had a part-time third-party. Other third-party services that we have are IT, legal, mowing, cleaning, and the engineering. Capital outlay, that would be things like new vehicles, the street. We obviously had five streets just recently worked on. I think that was around $47,000. That would be to rework five streets. Vehicles work for both Public Works and police. And that would be, and you know, the police obviously have other equipment. And then other expenses, the depreciation expense, that actually hasn't been showing up in our budget. We do have transferred a capital project fund, which is essentially for long-term expenses. We're trying to save money now. So if you think about it, for your personal expenses, you want to buy a car, but you don't want to borrow the money. So instead, you put money away, say $100 or $200 a month, into a bank account, and you're saving it so that you can buy a car for cash. That's what this is. So how do we look at all of these numbers? And again, we'll go through this when we get to the handout. You look at it for monthly performance versus the budget. So when we do our budget, we look at it on an annual basis. Generally, we divide that by 12. And so then you would look at your monthly actual versus your budget divided by 12. That's not super accurate, because there's a lot of variability when you get to month by month, year to date. So we are in month number eight, maybe? Something like that, nine, eight, I think eight. So eight months out of 12, that starts to get much more accurate, because you have smoothed out a lot of the month-by-month variability. Total spent versus the annual budget. Again, that starts to get accurate, because if you have something big-ticket, like a vehicle, and you budgeted for a vehicle, and you're looking at how much did you spend on the one vehicle versus what your budget was for the whole year, that's a great option to look at. And then your expenditures by department is another way we can look at things. City council's role in finance. That's definitely something that you guys are looking at. So council has actually already taken one step in this process. Last city council meeting, we looked at our exemption numbers. So we talked briefly before about the exemption values of disabled veterans, homestead exemptions, over-65 exemptions. So the city of Montgomery gives an exemption for over-65, which is $50,000, and disabled veterans, which is $10,000. And we left those the same as the prior year. So this works on a calendar. Our budget runs from, it begins, our budget calendar is, our fiscal calendar, sorry, is October 1st to September 30th. So that's why we're on the cycle that we're here. We try and start in around July to begin discussions of what next year's budget should look like. We already should have a good idea of what the current year's budget will end up with. Obviously, this year, there's a lot in flux. And so we're going to be making a lot of guesses as to what we're going to end this fiscal year looking like. We meet in a series of workshops, partially to discuss where we end the year and also projections for next year on the revenue side. You have to be confident that you know how much money you're going to have to work with before you know how much you have to spend. Coming into this meeting, the city administrator and department heads will have also already had meetings where they try to provide us with their ask or their preferences on how to allocate revenue. So the budget isn't necessarily an obvious A plus C equals C. Part of it is political and priorities of the residents, as expressed through your elected representative, which is you guys. Part of it's practical, part of it's experiential. There's no entirely right way to do the budget. Everyone brings something different to the process. And different city administrators have different processes as well. So sometimes you come to a budget process where each department's ask equals 140% of what the expected revenue is. So part of council's job is to bring that down to 100% of what the revenue is. And that also can include some of the other priorities, like saving for the future. So, you know, this is not where the cake and confetti part of your job comes from. Actually, there hasn't been any confetti in my part of the job, so I don't know when that happens. It's not impossible, but this is definitely where you get serious about figuring out what the future of the city looks like and how to make difficult decisions to allocate between the needs and wants and reality of your fiscal situation. And this year is going to be the most difficult since I've been here, because it's the fact that we're going to have less revenue next year than we had this year. And how to fit that reality into the actual needs of the city is going to be difficult. So there will likely be three to four to five workshops, which are iterations of discussions with department heads and the city administrator and council to identify priorities. And department heads will work and listen and discuss and try and go back and put pencil to paper and try and work their budgets back into what they think, they're hearing council say and what the city administrator says. And again, try and work this process back to a, And again, try and work this process back to a, I don't want to say a final solution, because that sounds bad, but work it into the constraints that the revenue picture is showing. Because ultimately, like we said on slide number two or three, you know, there are rules that we have to fit in. And one of them is a balanced budget, and the other one is, uh, tax rate increases are limited. As, um, a city council, you know, you can't just use property tax to, um, get your way out of uncomfortable situations on the, on the spending side. At least not at the local level. Um, and again, like Julie asked, you know, we're seventy-five percent sales tax driven anyway. So from a practical perspective, you'd have to raise sales or property tax a lot to give yourself a meaningful boost to a gap or to fix a gap in your budget. So that's not really practical, anyway. So the best way, in my opinion, is to have a good relationship with each other in the discussion process and be willing to listen, be willing to discuss with the department heads and, you know, discuss solutions, figure out where priorities lie, see if you can come up with common, common goals and work towards those goals to figure out a resolution between the competing expense categories. So once you figure out what your budget is based on your revenue projection, then you go to tax rate, which is a criminally complicated formula with language that makes no sense to the English language. But fortunately, a lady from the tax office comes and explains it all. And city council has, uh, meetings that are legally, Susan sets the legal notices, and the lady from the tax office provides the language that we look like fools up there and repeat, uh, exactly what she says we must say to set the tax rate and put the tax collection process in motion. And in the past, what we have done is either leave the tax rate the same or lower it. It's very difficult to raise taxes. Um, and again, it's based on what we think we're going to collect in taxes. And so i- it's, if you assume that you're going to collect X in taxes and you're going to leave your property tax rate the same, which is point four, then all this other legalese happens and you say whatever it is you have to say on the notice, then all that other stuff just happens. Again, once you finish your budget, it's based on what you think you're going to collect in, in sales tax. The tax assessment office tells, uh, the appraisal district tells you what you're going to collect in property tax. This other tax rate item thing happens on its own. Then you move on to oversight. During the year, this, every month, at the second meeting, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month, you get your council packet. Excuse me. On the council packet, um, in the finance report section, there will be, um, a lot of pages of really small writing. So you might need to get cheaters, um, to go over how you're doing versus the budget that you set earlier this year or earlier in the year. So, um, you can ask for questions or for, you can ask questions, you can ask for changes in your action plan. You can actually not approve items that you thought that you would in the budget. That's one way to save money, like in this case for this year. There are a lot of expenditures that we are not going to go through with that we had originally envisioned. Um, and that's how we're going to, to deal with the, the problem of revenue. Um, and it is your job as a city council person to check how you're doing, how the city is doing and to ask questions. You don't have to know the answers, you just need to ask the questions. And again, if you understand your own personal finances, you can probably understand the answers to the questions. If you did not understand the answers to the questions, it is not your fault. It is the person who's explaining the answer to you. When I worked in finance, one of my bosses told me that the worst question he ever got was from a little old lady in the audience. And she asked him a very simple question, and the answer he gave her was an idiot, was a complicated one, and he looked like an idiot in retrospect, because he should have given her a simple answer. And there is nothing that is complicated about finance. It is all addition and subtraction. It is all logic. So if you can't understand, it's not your fault. So have the confidence to demand a simple answer. That's how people get swindled, is not understanding the answer, because it's a complicat- it's not a complicated one. So have the confidence to demand the right to a simple answer. All right, so the other thing is the adjustment. That's the phase we're in right now. So pretty much all budgets need adjustments. You only have to legally adjust budgets, I think, if you're over, um, under, if you, if you get under a certain amount, or you undershoot your revenue or you overshoot your expenditures by a certain amount. Um, and we're obviously in that phase, and we will at some point legally adjust our budget when we know what's actually happening closer to the end. But, um, if your city administrator is any good, then they're letting you know early on that you're in trouble or doing well. And so that, you know, the city council is not surprised by anything that happens later on in the year. And if you're doing your job, you're not surprised either. So again, one, in finance, it's a teamwork, it's a team effort between city council and staff. Um, you should have a collaborative relationship. It's a team effort. And I think both sides feel comfortable and confident with a, um, again, a collaborative relationship, respectful collaborative relationship. Because it definitely, um, it definitely helps to have extra eyes on everything. And depending on what your area of expertise or interest is, you can provide an extra set of eyes when especially, you know, like right now, there's a lot of uncertainty. So it definitely helps if somebody else is interested in providing, um, additional input on something that's so important to the city. All right, so let's look at the details. I'm going to stop sharing so everyone can see each other. Do you have the printout that Susan gave, or do you have it up on your screen? Put your cheaters on, get your ruler. Because I need all those things, or else I can't, uh, I can't look across very easily. I think I lost my ruler. Anyway, all right. So page one is the account balances. So this is what I talked about. This is essentially your checking account for all of the funds. And it does have it set up by the type of fund that it is. So the first one you can see is quite large, but not the largest. This is the general fund. We can basically use this money for anything at one point five million dollars. Generally speaking, the checking account balances are, um, immediately accessible. And the investments, uh, depending, um, you'd have to look at the quarterly reports or ask Anthony. Um, they might be in CDs, which obviously are the same as your personal account. They have, um, penalties if you access them early. The construction fund is almost two million dollars. As I said, this money is specifically allocated via, um, via grant money, um, or via, uh, loan. This BOK financial series. Anthony, is this right? This is the, um, uh, the loans, the, um, uh, Department of Agricultural Loans?
That is correct.
Okay, so these money, this is clean water, clean, um, it's like, we have to build this specifically for water and sewer projects. So again, we have to get approval for this specific project. We have to, but from the state before we build it. So we can't use this money for just anything. Even if we use it for water and sewer, we can't even use it for just any water and sewer project. So Anthony is a very integral part of making sure that we don't screw up and get in trouble for using this money for the wrong stuff. So the debt service fund, as you can see, has almost no money in it, which is fine, because we just paid, um, in March, our debt service fund. I think we paid March and September, um, our interest. And there are a couple other things. MEDC, you can see, has one point two million dollars. Um, while it's semi-unrestricted, MEDC has specific, um, requirements on what they can spend their money on. They've got five categories and also a budget. And then the utility fund is one point seven million dollars, or one, one point eight, I guess, if you're rounding up. And that is, uh, since it's a, um, uh, it, it's only supposed to be spent for the utility projects and the utility fund and that sort of thing. It can't be used for pencils, for Susan. She has a, she has a pencil fetish. I'm kidding. Okay, so page two is the cash flow report for the general, uh, yeah, for the general fund. So as you can see, um, all very exciting. Actually, this has the receipts on the top. It has the, um, some transfers from the utility fund. And you can see, I kind of like looking at this, just to see who's, who's being paid for what. Big one, um, at the bottom of page two, Rick Hanna. Uh, he does inspections and plan reviews. So that's a, that's, that's something that we outsource. Kind of an interesting thing that we've kept an eye on in the past about, you know, whether we should continue to outsource or not. Um, page three, there's another interesting one, state comptroller. That's twenty-one thousand dollars, state criminal costs and fees. Remember how I said that, um, our, our tickets aren't necessarily a bonanza? That's why, that's a big chunk of money going back to them. So just going through there, I mean, this stuff is on our monthly, uh, again, our second, um, city council meeting every month. This thing is in there. So you don't even, it's not even something you have to ask Susan for under, uh, Texas Open Meetings Act request. It's, it's right there. Anyone can see. You go to page four, you can even find out what people are paid. It's crazy. All there. All right, so page six. So this is, we don't usually break this out in the, uh, monthly report. So if you look at the top, it says profit and loss budget performance dash public work. So this is specifically the departmental profit. Well, it's not the profit, because they are a cost center, so they only have expenses. So you can see how much it costs on a monthly, month-to-date and yearly cost. So let's go over the very top of, uh, page six, where it says April twenty. So that's April twenty twenty, so that's the month. The budget, which is really the budget for the month, like I said, when we have our full-year budget at number, and then you divide by twelve, and that's how you get to the budget number for the month, generally speaking. So when you go for things like health insurance, that's a real number, because you would generally think that your annual budget for health insurance divided by twelve is in fact your monthly number. So when you look at whether you're over budget for the month, so for health insurance, they're six hundred and fifty dollars over budget for the month. That's a real number. So October nineteenth through April twentieth, or April twenty twenty, so that's, uh, their year-to-date number. So again, that's the fiscal year, they, we run fiscal October first through September thirtieth. So that's public works, health insurance, year-to-date number of twenty-three thousand dollars. And again, year-to-date budget. So that's, what did I say? That was eight months? Year-to-date, so twelve, or, sorry, eight divided by twelve times the, uh, annual budget number, so that's nineteen thousand. So they're over budget by almost four thousand dollars on their health insurance. And then the annual budget for that number was thirty-four thousand dollars. So every financial, uh, page that we look at is the month, the month budget, the amount of the month over budget, the year-to-date cumulative, actual, the year-to-date budget, the amount over budget, and the annual budget. So I have to admit that I cheat. I almost always ignore the first three columns, because the month, the monthly data can be fairly lumpy. Um, the last four are pretty, pretty useful. So, and honestly, I almost always look at the second to last column first, the amount over budget. So that will tell you the positive numbers are over budget, the negative numbers are under budget. So looking down, the twenty-four thousand dot nine hundred, it's almost twenty-five thousand dollars, so I'll use my ruler. So in payroll taxes, oh, no, wages, sorry, use your ruler. We're almost twenty-five thousand dollars over budget in wages in the public works departmental report. That's worth a question. You know, I don't really care for a hundred and fifteen dollars over budget on life and accidental death insurance. You know, that's, that's, that's a rounding error, really. Even, even in personal, personal budget, that'll work, almost in rounding error. And the real driver is, when you get down to the bottom, that's thirty-eight thousand dollars over budget year-to-date in, in personnel. That's worth a question. And again, going all the way through the public work, you can look at that third column, and sometimes you'll find something that doesn't necessarily tell you on the, um, on the year-to-date number. So sometimes it will tell you something on the, uh, the other number. It usually has to do with capital expenditures. But I just wanted to mostly show you that you can get these on the departmental report side, rather than make you go through every one of these. So on page ten, you have public work, or the police department. And interestingly enough, they are under budget significantly on personnel, so that's ten. And so here's another, um, uh, comment. I use this a lot. Um, so I'll say ten item, um, uh, sixteen, one six six zero zero. So all of these line items have numbers um, that identify them by, uh, category. So if it was one six zero zero two, that would be contract services. So sometimes that can be helpful, sometimes it's not. It depends, sometimes the pages are not numbered well. So it can be difficult to, um, to find things and explain things to people. Whereas the line items that you're talking about are fairly exact, and especially if you're talking to Anthony, it can be really helpful to him to make sure he understands exactly what you're talking about. All right, so the reason why the police department is different is if you go to page eleven, they have some different items on here. Emergency light decals, one, one seven zero seven zero dot one. It's at the bottom. They've got something called watch guard. They've got something called transfer to capital project fund dash vehicle replacement, which they haven't done anything yet, but that's essentially saving for, we actually spoke about that for, you know, your personal, if you were saving for a car, so you could pay for it in cash. That's kind of what we're trying to transition them to do. So that we can correctly account for the cost of government. Even if they don't buy any cars in one year, it does actually cost them to have cars. It's called depreciation. It's called depreciation. In theory, you know, everything that you have costs you something even if you're not paying for that in cash that day. It's like having a lease on your car, a lease on your house, a lease on everything. Whether you buy it that year or not, it does in fact cost you. All right, page 13, court has the same thing. And they have some other items on page 13. 16310, they've got a judge's fee. We don't have our own judge. You'll be happy to know, since he only comes to work once or twice a month, we don't pay him full-time. So we have a contract and he works for $1,500 a month, and that's what we pay him, is $1,500 a month. So he's actually right on budget. He's probably the only person that we have who's exactly where he should be on his budget item. So that's quite nice. And then we had admin, which is the craziest one. No, I'm just kidding. On page 15, we have things like 16338 dot one, legal notices and publishing. Susan does a lot of that. We have a lot of required legal notices when we do zoning hearings and things like that. Let's see, we've got 16102 dot one, sales tax tracking. Actually, a pretty expensive line item. But at one point, we were not collecting all of the sales tax that we were owed. So that's quite a nice thing that we are trying to get on top of, just how to do that properly. All of the record shredding that we pay for comes out of this, even though other departments might use it, that comes out of the admin side. Printing and office supplies, ditto. The postage comes out of that side. On page 16, there's a lot of stuff that comes out of admin that's used by other departments. On page 17, there's a couple giant items. 17500, tax rebatement. Again, these are not items that Susan and Richard personally have caused to be spent. These are primarily related to Kroger and the first Hartford CVS tracked tax rebates. We enter into legal agreements with developers for various reasons and agree to rebate them with sales tax while there's a cost to that. We get the sales tax in on the revenue side, but it has to go out, which means we have to account for it on the cost side. So somebody has to pay for that, and it's Richard and Susan. All right, so now we get the really tiny stuff on page 18. This is the consolidated, and this is what you'll see on a monthly basis in city council meetings and that sort of thing. So the first page is our total income. And again, if you want to look at the second to last column, the, you know, I divide it in two sections. So you go total of 4100.1 taxes and franchise fees. You have a minus 197844. So what's going on there? Let's look up. All right, so we've got sales tax other of minus 217877.64. So we're significantly down in sales tax. So that's not really a surprise, to be honest. Now, there is a little bit of a trickiness in our sales tax. Well, there's a lot of trickiness in our sales tax, but, so one of the trickiness in our sales tax is that three of our top five, I believe, reporters are quarterly reporters. That means they do not report monthly, they report quarterly. That would be Kroger, Brookshire Brothers, and Entergy. And so our sales tax is lumpy. And it has gotten lumpier since the COVID-19 because the state has allowed people to delay payments. And if you're having other problems, you can enter into a, some sort of delayed payment plan with them, but they don't tell us what the delayed payment plan is. And so we have a number of people who have not paid, and I'm not entirely sure whether that's because they weren't open, they've gone out of business, or they aren't going to pay, or they're just paying late. So there's a lot of things going on in this number that, or they just have less business than they did before. So it's very, there's a lot of things going in this number that make planning difficult. But it's still a big negative number. But with the sales tax number, it is what it is, and it's pretty accurate. So no crying, you got to accept it and move on. The permits and licenses number minus, so that's 1400 dot two, that's minus 31,000. So that's also a real number, probably has something to do with the city being closed or reduced activity. If you look at the third line from the, or third column from the left, you know, one-third of that was just in April. So, you know, that's definitely something to watch. Fee for service is a pretty small number either way. Court fines and forfeiture is down 72, $73,000. So that's line item 14000. So if you look at Kimberly's reports over the last, almost, well, really over the last year, this has been a continuing trend that we have had fewer and fewer and fewer tickets. We have done a better job of clearing our warrants, so we've had revenues from that side of things. But this is definitely something that the city had had more of in the past and does not now. So this is a big gap that's unlikely to reverse. So other revenue is obviously not that important. Total revenue, $300,000 less than expected over the last eight months. That's a real number, folks. And we've got four more months to go. So $300,000 on a $400,000 budget. So anyway, anyone feel like partying? That's definitely, you know, what, there are a lot of numbers going on in here, but you can see how, I wouldn't say easy it is, but you know, you can go through pretty quickly and figure out what the highlights are and how to identify what your issues are and maybe questions that you want to ask without getting bogged down in every little one that you're looking at. Anthony or Richard, do you want to add to this?
I'll just say, I think you're doing a pretty good job of covering through all of this. And like, every time I think of something I want to add on to, I'm afraid it'll lead us down a rabbit trail of a 10-minute discussion and really take us off the point of this being basic. But I think what I will say is, you know, my job here as a city administrator, you just very basically said, is to run the city for the council. But I'm also here to help the council. When you have questions, you know, bring them to me. You know, the example I've liked to use through a lot of my career is, you know, while I'm running the administration, the office, the operations, you know, I'm often the biggest fish in the fishbowl, but I'm in the fishbowl. As the elected body, you are more often, because you're not here at City Hall all the time, you're out of the fishbowl. Your point of view is entirely different from mine in many ways, and I need the help of that point of view sometimes. And so, you know, your input, your advice, you know, those comments, I might not always be happy with them, but I'm always welcome to get them. Usually, if I'm not happy with them, it's a bit of frustration as to taking in the point of view I hadn't considered and now having to mesh that with the reality that is out there. So it's definitely not, you know, an emotion that's pointed back at you. It's a matter of how do I make this work now? And so, and so just remember, you know, oftentimes, I'm here to help you. So I think that's the best I can say with this at that point. But, you know, and I'm here for questions, whether it's during this presentation or, you know, in the months that follow, let me know.
Same thing. I mean, Rebecca, you've done an awesome job explaining everything. And, you know, just following up on Richard, I mean, if there's any questions that you have on any of the financials as well too, you know, feel free to ask. And, you know, we'll dig down deep and we'll try to get an answer.
Okay. Great. I'm going to whip through the expenses then, going through a lot of the same techniques, but adding one more. So we've done really well on keeping our expenses below budget as well. The only other thing that I would add is just look at it versus your annual budget. So if you end up with a line item where it's significantly below budget and/or, well, just significantly below budget, let's just make sure that it's something that's sustainably below, so let's, like, line item, hmm, where is that? So basically, I'm trying to say, if you're generating savings, let's make sure that they're sustainable savings. So...
16004, staff development, or there's a positive, 5728 on page 20. Is that what you were trying to highlight?
Which one is it, Sarah?
16004 on page 20, staff development.
Okay, so that one, that's actually an over. So when it's negative, you've saved. So staff development is something that is, you know, fairly likely in terms of, to be real, in that you've actually spent that on a fairly immediate basis.
I think I've got a good one for you.
Yeah.
Page 21, near the bottom, 16356, contract labor streaks.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, yeah. Near the bottom of page 21, about three or four...
There we go. So you might look at that and think, okay, so look how much money we've saved. But then you might be suspicious, thinking like, well, that could just go out the door. So I, you know, I might be, I might be happy thinking that that's a source of cash, but then you might worry, thinking that that's a temporary source of cash. So that's when you would need to talk to somebody like Richard to find out what the intent is. That's not something that Anthony would know because that's a policy rather than a precision question.
And with regards to this specific item here, what that number doesn't reflect was there was a road project ongoing and we, you know, we owed essentially $47,000 that will appear as one lump. It'll drastically reduce that negative. It'll still stay in the negative, but there'll be a nearly $50,000 change by the next figures you see. And so some of those things like that, it's just a matter of where they fall in the schedule.
So when you get to page 22, you get to the, we'll call it, we'll call it net income. We can just use that for fun. It says $340,000. Now, obviously, that's not a real number because we haven't done anything to adjust our assumptions about what else is happening to our income line. But it also says that it's possible, given where our income, you know, given the shortfall that we've already seen in our income, that our expenses have contracted a lot, and it's possible that we could end up the year, if we don't spend everything that we've already under budgeted year-to-date, it's possible, as long as we don't have a further $340,000 shortfall or more than that, that we might make it. So we just need to, we need to do a lot more projecting on what our shortfall is to figure out where we are. If you go into page 23, we have the utility fund. And this, as I said, is a standalone fund. The rate for your water and sewer were set as a, an exercise that was specifically designed to reflect the cost of providing services and included capital expenditures needed to maintain the system.
Councilmember Huss, there is a question from Julie Davis.
No. So in terms of the general fund, we have not put together a plan to mitigate the shortfall in revenue because we haven't spent anything yet. So the budget process that I went through going forward, that starts in like June, July, August, that's when we need to start, that's when we need to start considering this. So staff has already pulled in hiring. They're not spending on things that they had already planned on spending for, in this fiscal year, that might have cost implications for next year as well. But in some ways, my personal, so this is my personal opinion, this year's budget contraction is easy because we're already three-quarters of the way through the year essentially. And the way that our revenues are reported, it's two months in arrears. So we've only had one month of dodgy revenue so far, which means we're coasting through the end of the year on good fiscal management that we've already had through the, on the expenditure side throughout the whole year. Next year is going to be ugly, is my personal opinion. And there's going to have to be a lot more belt tightening, and there's no coasting. So I don't envy the people who have to run and live with, being politicians, with the consequences of the full year of this fiscal contraction. Because it's not going to be pleasant. Because the city will still need to provide the same level of services. Obviously, my feeling is that, you know, police and water are the two main services that citizens absolutely must have, top-notch provision of. And, but people expect all of the other services as well. So we need to find a way to provide all of those with less revenue. And it will require a lot of work on staff part.
All right, Becky, I just wanted to chime in for a second. I am the anomaly in the city. I am the only person that I know of in the city limits that has no city services.
Right.
But still pays taxes, which is part of the, for running for city council to pull services to that far end of the loop. But now we're talking about cutting them and cutting a budget, and so I'm really struggling here because, again, I pay $9,000, almost $9,000 in taxes, and I have one city service, and that's trash. And it didn't even pick up this week. It didn't pick up yesterday. So when I'm done here, I still have to go contact waste management and figure out why they didn't pick up my trash, because I'm on the end of the loop there, and I struggle there. So...
Right. Well, again, you know, back to the math that I went through, the $9,000 doesn't all come to the city. But, yes, you should still have your trash picked up, and you still deserve all of the services that the city provides equally to all other citizens, regardless of whether you pay $5 or 500 or 5,000. I agree. So, you know, and again, I don't want any citizen to have a drop-off in services while we have a drop-off in revenue. And that's been one of the things that the city has benefited. And that's been one of the things that the city has benefited from, you know, in kind of the three quarters, one quarter, in the three, three quarters of our, our revenue has essentially been sales tax recently, is that, you know, other people are paying our taxes. People outside of the city are paying for our quality of, of life, or our governmental quality of life, anyway, through their, the sales tax that they pay. And so we just need to be able to find a way to do more with less in order to keep our service provision high, the quality of that. So just jumping through the utility fund, almost everything works the same way. Although some of the things on here, on the income side, fall right off on the expense side. The grease trap infections are a third-party outsourced and it's almost a one-to-one cost. And the solid waste revenue is also almost a one-to-one cost. With our largest customer being closed, that has dramatically impacted our revenue. I don't know if that was the entire reason for the 2 million drop in usage last month. But that definitely, it could have been rain as well, but that definitely will impact our finances in this next year. Sorry, my doctor's calling me. Do you mind if I touch that real quick? Oh wait, I don't know how to do that if I'm on the phone. Anyway, but everything else works about the same. But again, you have much larger projects on here. If you go on page 25, that's almost $600,000 of projects in preventative maintenance, which we have not to date spent on. And then jumping over to page 27, we have the capital projects account, which I referenced a couple of times. This is the one with a gigantic fund balance. And for the most part, you can see on here that the projects are separated out by type. So on expenses, they have it by project. Or actually, no, I guess they don't. They have it by type of item, but then they, they do out by
There's, there's definitely there's the bridge repair, Baja project.
Yeah. It's very specific on here.
Detailed.
Yeah, it's, it's very, and the, and the amounts are very large. Although on the budget, it's, a lot of money is not spent. Usually what happens is contractor will submit a pay estimate. And the pay estimates, again, range from, you know, $40,000 to $200,000, it's not uncommon. So large lumps will come out of place, out of this at a time. Anthony doesn't do this all on his own. The pay estimates will be approved by the engineers, Richard will approve it as well. And Anthony makes, makes it happen and make sure everything is allocated properly once it's gone through our internal controls. Okay, any questions? I've only got a couple of minutes before I have to jump off on, to a doctor's appointment. Sorry. You can take yourselves off me if you want to ask.
It's Kevin. I just want to say, first of all, thank you, thank you, thank you, all you guys for bringing this together for us. I'm going to pretend I've got it all figured out after this short call, but I will say I do appreciate this, the, the resources that, that I have at my disposal. And I know that you guys are all there to help us, so I want to say thank you very much for that.
Absolutely. If you have other questions, please contact me separately. I'd be willing to go over this again or answer other questions or, you know, you can quiz me and, or I can quiz you.
And that goes for me as well with regards to separate questions or if you have things that come up along the way. You know, I am always here to help. Might not be available on a moment's notice, but I will get with you as soon as I can if I'm not available at that time. I think the most helpful thing in one way that was discussed earlier was, don't let the large numbers and the large amount of lines, you know, scare you. It can be explained simply. There's a lot to it, it is complicated, but the whole city budget is a thick document. It breaks down into departments and two types of expense. You know, it can be, you know, discussed simply. It's just a matter of taking the time. When you start looking at six and seven-figure numbers, I know how it is when you're coming into it and your eyes can glaze over and you might not relate to it. You know, you really, then think of a $6 million budget like you would a $60,000 household income. Just knock a couple of zeros off and look at the scale. You know, you will begin to get used to it and you can understand it.
But having said that, you know, $5,000 does in fact matter. And we have had in the past, long, ardent discussions over $5,000 worth of expenses. So, you know, it's important to the taxpayer for us not to get complacent about their money. So, you know, it's not the federal government, you know, a few million dollars here, a few million dollars there. And pretty soon you're talking about real money. You know, we, we don't, we don't live by that rule here.
What's the normal process if we do have a question online? Do we, do we go straight to you, Richard, versus going to the department head or Anthony?
Uh, normally I'd say come to me. I'm happy to refer you to the department head. A lot of times I may just send you straight to the department head. And it may, you know, in time, often be a, a subject matter question as to, as to how we specifically handle any particular one. But, you know, the department heads are part of the second council meeting of the month, you know, more than for just to present their report, so that they're, they're able to develop a rapport with council and that they feel comfortable working with you as well as you working comfortable with them.
All right, thank you. Great job, everyone.
All right.
One thing I'd like everyone to take from this, as time goes on, you know, for some of you, you've been on council for a while or for those of you, when you come to council, you know, this is a process I would like to continue as time goes forward and we continue to have new councils come as elections go on. I'd appreciate any input of how we can improve something like this as time goes on as well.
Okay.
Thank you, Becky, for this together.
Thank you very much, y'all, appreciate it. Bye.